Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers. And welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, March 23, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, the Vice Sign, Padilla, eleven members present and in court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me recognize Councilmember Perry for both our flag salute and an introduction.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Before I begin the pledge of allegiance, I want to introduce the Can Do Neighborhood Council today, and I would ask them all to stand up, please, and be recognized. And they are celebrating their first anniversary this month. They have been working very hard to provide a thoughtful community plan that includes intergenerational safety for children and seniors, support for quality-of-life programs through a vibrant recreation and parks programs, and neighborhood beautification as part of their budget priorities. They set a very, very good example for the entire city of Los Angeles, as they are collaborative and inclusive, and I look forward to working with them this year and many years to come. Thank you for coming. And with that, please rise and put your right hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And I understand Mr. Zine also has a presentation today that's not quite ready, so we'll interrupt the meeting when your special guests are here and tend to that. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Ludlow moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on non-agenda items. General public comment for today's meeting is opened and closed. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. As a public convenience or necessity in Council District 6, a motion is required, and I believe the recommendations are to deny without prejudice.
Okay. Members, item number one now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Do we have any requests to call this item special? We do need a motion. Mr. Cardenas, this is an item in Council District 6.
Item number one moved to deny.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That is denied. Next item, please.
Items two and three are also public hearing items. Council should open the hearings and continue the hearing and ordinances to April 13.
Members, items two and three now before us. And again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, and unless there's an objection or need for discussion today, these items are continued to April 13. Next item, please.
Item number four is a public hearing item, confirmation of street lighting assessments in Council District 15.
Item number four now before us, and Ms. Han isn't here yet. Let's hold this matter on the desk as we await her arrival. Next item, please.
Item number five is also a public hearing item. It's an ordinance authorizing acquisition of real property for Fire Station 87 in Council District 12.
Okay. Item number five now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Members wishing to be heard on item number five or to call this item special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items six through 21, there are two reports on item number 21. The recommendations differ slightly.
Okay. Members, items six through 21 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Items six through 21.
Mr. Padilla?
Miss Clerk.
I'd like to have item 16 continued for one week on behalf of Ms. Han.
Okay. Item 16, we do have a request to continue, seeing no objection. Item 16 is continued one week. That'll bring it back on March 30. Mr. Garcetti.
On item 21, I'd move the budget report on that. It's the same as HCD report, but we added one thing in budget.
Okay. We have a motion, item 21. Any other specials on items six through 21? Mr. Parks?
Fifteen.
Fifteen called special by Mr. Parks. Any other specials?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Was that item 15 or 18?
I believe Mr. Parks called item 15 special. Okay. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Item number 22, Mr. President, is awarding the sale of bonds. Do you wish to take that matter up now?
Please announce the item.
Awarding the bonds to a syndicate led by Merrill Lynch at a true interest cost of $3.914173. And Merrill Lynch Syndicate includes one of the firm, which is a minority-owned firm.
Okay. Members wishing to be heard on item 22, or to call this item special? If not, Mr. Parks moves. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next items?
Items 23 through 58 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Items 23 through 58 now before us.
You gonna call 58? Fifty-eight, please, special.
Fifty-eight called special by Mr. Smith. And we also have cards on item 55. Let's call that matter special.
And also 53?
Fifty-three called special by Mr. Smith. Other than item 58, excuse me, other than item 55, we do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Just want to open the public hearings and close the public hearings. Specials. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, for a special, item 44, and you've already identified 55. Thank you.
Forty-four called special by Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Yes, I'd like to refer 40 to Public Works Committee and call 43 special, please.
Forty-three called special by Mr. Garcetti. And item 40, unless there's an objection, that matter is so referred. Mr. Parks.
Mr. Chair, could I have number 20 fourth with?
Fourth with on item number 20. Any other requests for specials, items 23 through 58? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with, please, on items 23 and 25. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item four was called special, however, I don't believe Ms. Han is here yet.
Ms. Grohl, do you know if we expect Ms. Han today? Ms. Grohl, do you know if we expect Ms. Han today?
As far as I know.
Okay. We'll hold this matter on the desk as we await her arrival. Madam Clerk, let's also send item 52 forth with, please.
Next item would be item number 15, and that was called special by Council Member Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to raise attention to item 15 because we have seen so much activity in the council of late about the public and community gardens, and Mr. Reyes and I have put our heads together recently and talked about maybe we have some solutions, long-term solutions, that would aid the city of Los Angeles by making some of our smaller parks, particularly those that do not have park directors, and also some of our surplus land through some of our proprietary departments available, and that we're asking Rec. Park and Department Ward and Power to move forward to see how we might accommodate some of these neighborhood gardens, and which would be local to the people that are in the community. But in exchange, we know that our parks really survive and are far more secure when people and activities are within the park. And so we think it's a good trade-off, in hopes that as we continue to move forward on dealing with our security and maintenance of our parks, it could be a gathering place, just as we've seen the farmers' markets develop throughout the city, and the tremendous support that they have, that we use some of our existing land to support them. None of them will be as large as the current community garden, but certainly diffused throughout the city, it would appear that we could accommodate a large number of people in that area. And so I'd ask an aye vote on 15, because I think it is a solution, if not a total solution, a solution to solve some of the issues of community gardens.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, thank you. I have a support for this motion. I just have one caution, and I hope that there's some language. Mr. Parks, is this going to go to committee? Is this a policy statement we're making right now?
No, this was in arts. It did not come through our committee.
It did not come through? It came through arts already? I have one concern, and that is that there needs to be language in here somewhere that protects us from problems that we found in Ms. Perry's district, that when you let people use land, they become attached to it, and they feel they own it. And I don't want us to get into a position that if we find that we want to use it in the future for development of a park or whatever, that we're somehow then becoming landlords, evicting these people, and it's a bad scenario to get back into. So I think there needs to be language in there that says there's a very strong understanding on the part that we're letting them use it at our choice, and that if any time in the future we have a city need for it, that we have the right to take that back and do the best we can to find another place for them. But I don't want to get in the same situation we got into in Ms. Perry's district through no fault of our own, but this would be through our own decision in the future.
One thing, Mr. Smith, and one, I believe, in budget and finance, we've asked the city attorney and several departments that have what appears to be outdated language in leases and contracts to go back and redo that, because we've seen the same pitfalls in some of our contracts on buildings and other things. And so we have at times departments creating their own leases, but that's on paragraph, the last paragraph of the motion, we'd hope that we'd get that language in there if there's a lease or license, that it would be in the benefit of the city.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Parks, and Councilmember Smith for this question. It does state very clearly that instruct the Department of Recreation and Parks and DWP, Water and Power, to report on the implementation initiative to enable by lease, license, or other agreement or mechanism of volunteer and community groups to use small parcels. Colleagues, I find that as I go through the whole process evaluating our use of land, we know the mayor's office has been looking at reviewing this whole listing of city properties, but then I come across instances where Water and Power is leasing out open space to a church or to a business without working with our office. We find that they're committed for so many years, and in fact, these are pressure points that we can cause relief when we do have these overcrowded conditions. So in the spirit of cooperation and in light of the tension that has arisen from the experience that Council President has already referred to, it is important that we start evaluating all of our assets. It's interesting to see the harbor actually control land in the inner city, and then find this disconnect between community folks, the council, and the community. So it's important that we align these types of opportunities. I appreciate the directive of this motion, and hopefully we can start establishing some more integrated processes that speaks to open space. And, you know, folks, they speak to, you have so many parks, you're talking about parks, where's the jobs? Where's the housing? Well, the truth of the matter is, businesses will locate where it's inviting for their employees. We can't change environments unless we have the ability to change the image of places where families can gather. And the fact is, parks are an economic development tool if properly situated and aligned with local communities, businesses. And so it's a big-picture point of view, and I appreciate the step we're taking. Thank you, Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. And just to pick off, to pick up where Mr. Reyes left off, I think you're right. I mean, the most important factor is livability in any area, and making sure that we have those green spaces that make a neighborhood livable is so important for the economic development. Sometimes we're forced by some to choose between either a development project or a park, and I've always told folks who are rooting for the development project because they're saying that's the only thing that'll bring back a neighborhood, that parks are economic development spurs. They're very important. Green space, I know we're going to be talking about open space and trail for many of our equestrian folks here later today, that's so important to the quality of life and whether or not people settle here. I do want to express some frustration, though, because it's been three years that we've been talking about doing this. We have a great community gardens project with Fresh Fruit Access Project with our block grant monies where we're able to do community gardens. I know people have done it in many of their different districts, but it shouldn't take this long to do an inventory of our land, especially in a difficult budget year, when we need to look at some of the options of whether some of that land can help us with the budget, just as the state is going through right now. The state is attempting to do this in a period, I think, of three months. Now, they may find it's more difficult to do than doing it three months, but three years, even though there are multiple jurisdictions, this has to get done. It's something that I think our community folks, potential developers, parks advocates, housing advocates need to have as a central place to go where they can see what exists throughout the city. We've done that in my own district. I finally kind of got frustrated waiting, so we commissioned some USC students, graduate students, to do it. So now, whether it's a neighborhood council or developer, they can come and they can see where the opportunity parcels are, city-owned lots, nuisance properties, et cetera. But it's something that we have to do throughout the city. It doesn't take a ton of work, it just takes coordination, and that's something that's falling through the cracks. So I hope, Mr. Parks, I want to praise your motion, but I hope this spurs that inner jurisdictional cooperation amongst our both proprietary departments and our regular departments, because we should have had this done a year and a half ago, and I don't want to see another three years go by before we have that inventory.
I see no one else wishing to speak, so the matter is before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Madam President, item number four was being held on the desk for Councilmember Han, and that is an ordinance denying protests and confirming assessments of a street lighting district in Council District 15.
Ms. Han?
Actually, I just need for this to once again be continued for 30 days. This is, again, is our lighting assessment projects throughout the city of Los Angeles. I've asked for Task Force to put together recommendations on how we might better develop a ballot that people can understand before they vote no on whether or not they want lights. It was also involving our own departments not voting in those elections, even though there would be ending up paying a substantial amount on the assessment. So that report is scheduled, I believe, to come back in April, so I would just like to continue this for 30 days. So before we approve any of these in any of our council districts, we need to make sure that people understand the ballots and what they are or are not voting on. So, thanks.
And April, excuse me, 30 days would be April 23rd.
So we will continue this to April 23rd. Without objection, that will be the order.
Next item, Madam President, item number 43 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Let me recognize Mr. Garcetti on item 43.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I know we've discussed a lot about our day labor centers throughout the city. This is an instance in which we're going to be moving the Day Labor Center in East Hollywood, which is unfortunately about five or six blocks away from the Home Depot to right adjacent to the Home Depot. It underscores, and I know Mr. Reyes has talked about this quite a bit, our need really to put these in the agreements with Home Depot, other stores that attract day laborers at the beginning, so that we don't have to try to do these things at the outset. But your support today will really allow day laborers to become part of a program, just like in CD-1 in Cypress Park, at the Home Depot there, where they are part of education, where they have to line up for work, and they don't all rush up to the cars. If people have been to the Home Depot in Hollywood, the moment you pull into the parking lot, there's just, you know, 10 people who run up to your car and looking for work. It's kind of chaotic. There's a small element of the day labor population that's criminal element, and it's very difficult for the police in Hollywood to be able to crack down on them when there's no allocated place for them to go. So today, this will help us move forward. I appreciate all the folks who have helped work on this in Hollywood. I know that it's been a difficult process, and especially for the Assistance League, which is there, and there's a whole cluster of social services there. We appreciate their understanding and their work with us to make this happen, but this will hopefully go a long way to improving the life of the day laborers, but at the same time, improving the quality of life in Hollywood, and making sure that police have the tools they need to crack down on any criminal element that infiltrates that population and that works out of Hollywood. So I appreciate everyone's support today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I, one, is that what's important about this process, and I want to congratulate my colleague, Councilmember Garcetti, on this, is that it's not only just where they stand, it's not only just how they behave at these centers, it's about how folks who are trying to assimilate, trying to understand how to get into this society and be productive, these are folks that are working with their hands, they're laborers. But there's also an incredible educational and social component that allows them, through nonprofits who are aligned with these services, that introduces the laborers into a system in which they can learn how to defend themselves, they can learn how to upgrade their skillset, so they can become the kind of employee where they can, individual who can move from a labor position to higher roles, different roles in society. It is no secret that as the crunch continues in our economy, and as other countries begin to feel the tension of the decreasing opportunities in our world economy, people continue to migrate to this area. The folks here are just trying to earn a living, and it's the social infrastructure, educational networks that allows them to move on. In the Cypress Park area, I know we have a great program there, but what's happening is that we have a lot more people coming into the area. There is an element that is dealing with the sub-economy, drug dealing, and other kinds of activities, so it allows for the LAPD to come in at a much more effective manner to start weeding out how this can work. In other words, without this, it becomes more chaotic. With this, we are able to define a place that allows them to not only deal with the physical aspects of where you pick up a labor, but also the whole social network, the people development component, that makes our city that much more, how can I say this, improve our quality of life with these kinds of support systems. So I want to thank Councilmember Garcetti for pushing on this. I just want the CDD and LAPD to continue working on the ones that already exist. Yes, there are problems, but then again, this is a kind of process that we have to stay on top of and continue to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to commend Councilmember Garcetti for his vision and his progressive attitude in this arena. We are establishing one in the San Fernando Valley near Canoga and Roscoe, near a Home Depot. We're getting great cooperation from Home Depot and the establishment, and what we have found is, while day laborers congregate at one location, we have a site miles away. They don't have transportation. It creates a great dilemma, because you've got to put it where the problem exists, and clearly we have problems that we have to address. So we are establishing one right at the Home Depot site. I commend you on what you're doing with this, and it's all a matter of quality of life for everyone, but progressive vision is what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. There's no other council members wishing to speak, so open the roll on item 43, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 44 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Councilmember Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Berne's Place, this is a project that we've been working with for many, many years. It started three or four years ago. We've been trying to put together the funds. The challenge we have is that it is a street that has collapsed because of the erosion underneath the street in the Hill area. It's collapsed to the point where it's impacted two properties. The properties have been red-tagged. Every time we went somewhere to find funds to get this repaired, we always, always told how we couldn't do it. We finally found a way to do it. These families have suffered a hardship far too long. It is one of those instances that speaks to how we, as a body, city government, are responsive to our constituents. It's about time we get this thing fixed. I count on your support. This is one of those instances that families, a group of families will be able to come back to their home, will make it safer for the Montecito Heights area, and I just want to thank my staff for their hard work. We found a way to get it funded, and I appreciate an aye vote. Again, Montecito Heights has been waiting far too long for this, and I'm happy we're finally at this juncture. And quite frankly, councilmembers, those of us who have these retaining walls and these surface streets that were built back in the '30s and '40s when we were creating jobs for the workforce during the Depression, while these structures are now collapsing, they're already ended their life, their use, and the end result is a serious and in some instances devastating impact when the walls fall on houses, when the walls fall on cars, which has already happened in my district, and it tends to happen in the older community areas where the projects back in the '30s and '40s were completed. And unfortunately, Mother Earth has a way of telling us it's in charge, so the erosion is causing these man-made structures to fall apart. So I appreciate an aye vote, and I just want to thank my constituents in Montecito Heights for their patience, and we'll get to this project, and we'll bring back those families back to their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Members, this matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forth with, per Mr. Reyes's request as well. Thank you. Next item?
Item number 53 was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith? Item 53? Or Mr. Zine?
I just want, I was trying to figure out what it was we were doing here asserting jurisdiction in a labor issue, and I just want to know what it is. Have we, has there been negotiations with the union?
From the department, I have to talk about this, or Bill, or somebody.
Is someone from the department here, or CAO? Could we have a presentation of this?
Recently, several units that were formerly represented by EAA, or Engineers and Architects Association, were, the group voted to transfer that, that relationship from EAA to the group meeting the employees to IBW. Now IBW is trying to, this is the first step of many steps to ensure that their contract provisions are similar, and the first step is with the holidays. IBW does not recognize the Cesar Chavez holiday on Monday. Instead, they opted to take the half-day before Christmas in their MOUs.
An additional floater.
In addition, okay, in an additional floater. The, what we, as you know, this is considerable debate last year, when we decided to offer the Cesar Chavez holiday to our council-controlled units in lieu of the, of the half-day holiday before Christmas, but our folks did not get the additional floater. So basically, that's what it is, is trying to match up the two units, given that the, those formerly represented by EAA are now represented by IBW, and that they would, if this is approved, the department's employees represented by IBW would not recognize the Cesar Chavez holiday, but instead would get the half-day before Christmas and the additional floater.
And this has been negotiated with the union and with management?
Yes, it has. Yes, we've, I've had discussions with our, our union, and they are in agreement with us. We have a letter of agreement to come to you and ask for this.
Okay. Then the question is, why are we asserting jurisdiction if they've agreed to this already?
I was told, maybe you can explain it, that we needed to sort of assert jurisdiction and approve it before Monday, the holiday. I was told there was a timing issue.
I believe it's a friendly Prop 245, so it can be resolved completely prior to Monday.
Thank you. No, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas?
I have a friendly inquiry. Just a few years ago, I was very proud to cast a vote for a state holiday here in California, for the only labor leader ever to have a holiday in his honor, or her honor, in this case, a man. And that holiday is in fact coming next week, and that's why we needed to assert jurisdiction, so that the holidays would line up and there would be no confusion between the different individuals and departments within DWP. But my question is this, again, just a friendly inquiry, how did it happen that the, some of the labor organizations were in fact honoring Cesar Chavez by taking one of their holiday, I would imagine a floating holiday, and making it a set holiday on Cesar Chavez's birthday once a year, yet in these negotiations, it seems to have fallen off the table, and it is not going to be a recognized holiday by DWP employees? Anybody know how that happened?
Well, sir, let me say first of all, this is certainly no intention to discredit or in any way demean the importance of that great labor leader. We recognize that. This is nothing more than an effort to align the holiday structure with all of our bargaining unit employees. The IBW, who represents a lion's share of our employees, have opted to have the two floating holidays. The bargaining unit that was formerly represented by EAA had this Cesar Chavez holiday. So it's nothing more than trying to align administratively those, those holidays so that everyone has the same options. I can't, I can't answer your question as to why one opted to have it and the other one did not.
Well, I appreciate that explanation, but it's really disappointing to see that such a strong organization would pass up the opportunity, to take the opportunity to once a year reflect on someone who not only preached but lived nonviolence, just like another American, Martin Luther King, of which he has a recognized holiday as well. And it's unfortunate that this individual, who was an American citizen, and someone who, in my opinion, certainly lived and put forth the ideals of what this country is all about, which is to speak your mind, to speak about what's righteous, to fight about what's righteous, and then to do it in a way that is nonviolent, in a way that does not violate anyone else's rights, does not violate anyone else's space even. What it does is it brings, what Cesar Chavez brought about was something that I think are the kinds of ideals that we should encourage people to reflect on every single year. And that's one of the essences of why I think we have holidays, such as famous presidents and famous people like Martin Luther King, and in this case, Cesar Chavez here in the state of California. I just think it's unfortunate that, that this department is choosing not to recognize his holiday. And I will talk further with the labor leaders over there to find out why they're not recognizing Cesar Chavez amongst other many wonderful individuals that they could have chosen to recognize. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
You know, colleagues and distinguished members here of Department of Water and Power, I can't emphasize to you anymore the need to have the youth of our city, Spanish surname, Latinos, Mexicanos, Latin Americans, to be able to point to a hero. And what this gesture does, in my mind, it takes away from that sense of honor. Can you tell me any other heroes that this nation recognizes that reflects a population where the Spanish language dominates this Western Hemisphere to the degree that Cesar Chavez does? I think not. So why are we doing this to our youth? We need people who can instill self-esteem. We need examples of individuals that have struggled all their life for justice, for the struggles that they represent, like Martin Luther King. And we don't have those heroes. And here are we saying, for the convenience of administrative processes, that it's okay to move him aside? I think that's wrong. I'm not sure who makes up IBW. I'm sure they're workers and laborers, so I'm surprised that they would take that position. It shocks me, because they are workers. We represent workers. I represent a district of workers, as well as investors. So why are we doing this to Cesar Chavez?
Well, as I explained to you, sir, I share your views on, on the man himself. I suspect that a good number of our employees will recognize the holiday by exercising their option under the floating holiday. Our explanation is simply that it was just an opportunity to align the two bargaining units with the same structure.
Well, I'm going to take this opportunity to make some generalizations, but the fact is, we spend more money on our prisons than we do on our youth. We spend less money on our education than we do on our youth. We incarcerate them. We don't provide training. They are the last of priorities. Those who have a sense of wanting to be part of the society, who look different than the mainstream, who don't have heroes, who don't have holidays, and here we are, taking one away. It's more than just the convenience of administration. It's about a message and instilling the kinds of heroes our youth need today to be able to move into a direction that's more positive. We need that positive reinforcement. And I'm very, very disappointed that no one's considering the impact, the message we're giving to our communities when we take away our heroes, or we diminish their presence and their sacrifice for the sake of a higher quality of life for everyone. And I'm sorry, it's not you, I know you're the messenger, but for me, it's just a very emotional issue, but it's a very pragmatic one, too, when we look at what we're doing to our young people, when we take away their heroes, and we take away the, what they've given to our society. And it's very disappointing.
Mr. Cardenas?
You know, I just want to compliment what you just said, Councilman Reyes. You're absolutely right. It is about awareness. You're absolutely right. It is about this, this particular holiday that we're talking about that's disappearing within the DWP workforce. And just to bring you up to speed, everybody up to speed, and one thing I want to make very clear, I'm not so much bothered at what the department's doing. I understand it was a negotiation, and it appears that in the past, the IBW was not willing to work out some way in which they could shift over one of their floating holidays into a Cesar Chavez-recognized fixed holiday. I get that. And apparently, that, that mindset is still following through today. So I just wanted to point out, you're absolutely right, Councilman Reyes. It is about awareness. That's one of the main reasons why we have holidays after a particular event or a particular individual. It's about educating the American public about the values of our country. And once again, Cesar Chavez was one of those individuals who meets that standard, or merits that kind of recognition. So much so that the state of California, when we made it a state holiday, we did in fact back it up with funds to our educational system throughout the state of California, so that school districts could use those funds to educate children about who Cesar Chavez was, but more importantly than the individual, what he stood for, what he stood for. So even though this is a friendly issue that we're talking about here today, this is a very serious issue, because it's very important that we not forget, especially, it just baffles me that a union would not want to recognize and put forth the energy and the compromise to recognize the only labor leader in the country to ever have a holiday in his honor. And we're missing that opportunity right here.
Thank you. Let me recognize Councilmember Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a quick question. I'm unclear as to the context in which this has arisen, and I, I'd like to know, why wasn't this issue of negotiating this package brought up in the context of negotiating a contract on behalf of the employees as opposed to a board resolution?
The, the holiday, the negotiations took place between the, the,
Hold my time.
Engineers and Architects Association, and as Mr. Fujioka pointed out, those MOUs are now being merged into the IBW. So it was a negotiated holiday, and in order to align all employees with the same holiday structure is why we're here today.
Okay. I'm not really clear about what that means. Why isn't it?
Well, basically, the employees who are formerly represented by EAA, as of, after the timeframe, it might have been about four to six months ago, this, a group of employees were represented by EAA. They voted to disert from EAA, and then, as a consequence, to be represented by IBW. Now the department is taking several attempts, several steps, and this is the first of many, to align the, the contracts, the existing contract, the ODAA contract, with the new IBW contracts. And so they want, they want the same holiday structure for the employees that are now represented by IBW.
What you're doing is you're taking a symbol, which is an inspiration to many people across the board in many, many, many instances, and sacrificing that because you're attempting to lift out a provision that was in a previous situation and put it in this new situation as opposed to going through a process.
I'm speaking towards the mechanics and not the merits.
No, I understand.
And the reason why this is happening is that the holiday is being recognized on this upcoming Monday. And so the department feels that it's important for their employees to observe the same, to be on the same page basically with respect to holidays. But that's the, that's the department's call.
Well, I have, I have an issue with the process, and then the outcome is obvious.
I can assure you that regardless of the outcome, your views and your concerns will be expressed to our labor unions with full vigor.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you. I have a question regarding the representatives from the union. Are there any Latinos on the union? Is elected representatives for that particular union?
Yes, sir, there are.
Did they express any concern or interest in this change?
I have not heard from them at all, one way or the other, but I'm sure if I had negative concerns, they would have expressed them to me.
They were present during the discussions on the swap, on the change, the day swap?
Yes, they were.
And they didn't voice any concerns or issues?
No, sir, they did not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
If we vote no, what happens? Please hold my time.
Well, I'm not totally clear on that. I have a city attorney sitting next to me. Maybe, um,
Can you get the city attorney down here?
I beg your pardon.
Mr. Marr?
The contracts which previously, we have EAA contracts which set in place certain rules for, that apply to those employees until the city concludes the meet and confer process. In my opinion, whatever the status quo is established by those EAA contracts will continue until we adopt, we complete that meet and confer process and, and those contracts are ratified. One of the conditions of employment which would continue in effect until there's a subsequent memorandum of understanding is the, is the Cesar Chavez holiday. The problem we have, and the problem, and it's a mutual problem between both the union and DWP, the, the problem that we have is we are now trying to work out the agreements that will supersede the EAA contracts. If the employees get the next Monday off, which the, for Cesar Chavez, if Cesar Chavez is honored in that way, we have almost by default foreclosed, at least for, for this year, the possibility of aligning those contracts, which is something that is, is, is desirable both from local eighteen, IBW's point of view and DWP's point of view. In other words, this whole process that we're, all of us are engaged in right now is part of an ongoing meet and confer process in an attempt to resolve a dispute.
I believe there's a strong message being sent as I listen to this dialogue. I am not sure if the union representatives understand the significance of the symbol and the reality of the message we're giving to our young people that are even sitting here. I don't know if the Latino leadership of the union understands the insult I feel is being made by disregarding through this action the significance of Cesar Chavez. I'd like to have the opportunity to sit down with them and ask them, do they really mean to do that? Do they really mean to say that Cesar Chavez didn't matter? Do they really mean to say that it's okay not to uphold his holiday? And do they really mean to say to the young people, it's okay? We don't need to memorialize him through this honor. I'd like to have that opportunity. Do we have that? Because right now, I want to vote no. I don't think we should do this, because I don't think that's the message we should give to a city who more than fifty percent speaks Spanish, who majority come from Mexicano, Latino heritage, ethnicity, and to disregard the only person in holiday is wrong. I'm wondering if they really understand what this means. Do we have that time with them? Can we have that ability to speak with them, to get that understanding on the table?
You, of course, this council, of course, speaks through its negotiators at the table. And, and these issues have been discussed, and I know, and negotiations I'm personally familiar with, although I'm not familiar with these, these issues have been brought to the table and discussed. We, we have here a process that we're obligated to gauge in, a meet and confer, a negotiations process.
Can I meet with them? I'm trying to get to that understanding, sir. Can we, can we hold this on the table, or postpone this, continue it, and get that opportunity, just to get to understand why they would think this way?
Okay, point of, point of information, Mr. Lello?
If, if I could, and I know that Councilmember Han wants, as the author of the motion, but I think what Councilmember Reyes is raising right here, colleagues, is, is an option that allows us to allow the employees who appointed their bargaining team to come to the table tomorrow to address these very valid concerns that are being raised. We won't kill their opportunity to do what DWP is saying if they come in and make that, that argument to us tomorrow, but they at least will have an opportunity to hear us, and we won't miss our time.
All right, we have, we have a request, a motion to continue this for one day. I think there's no objection to that. Let me ask you on, that's Mr. Reyes's motion. Is there, there are three other people who requested to speak. If there's no objection, we'll continue it for one day.
The question, Madam Chair.
And with, the request that we have the bargaining units come forward and either explain their differences or explain why they are supporting this request.
The question is, Madam Chair, can we keep the jurisdiction here? Can we, can we separate this so that we assert jurisdiction, but hold it for a day?
Let's ask the city attorney.
The council hasn't voted on jurisdiction yet.
Can, can we continue the matter of asserting jurisdiction for one day?
Could we also get a time?
The city attorney has indicated that we do have the, we can continue it for one day and still be within the assertion of jurisdiction.
That's good.
So that is the technical answer to the question. The more specific question is, if we continue for one day, we want bargaining units, representatives to be here to discuss this with us.
Because the board voted on this March sixteenth, right?
The last day would be Friday, March twenty-sixth.
The last day to the act would be Friday, so we're still within our time.
Right. So with that consensus, we will continue this one day with the request that the department and the bargaining units come back tomorrow.
Thank you, Madam. I believe I have two minutes left. If you don't mind.
Go.
I just want to be very clear that we do want to support the employees, the unions. I have a strong record supporting the workers, but here in this case, I question the, the thinking process of the representatives and understanding what this says. If this begins now, we are setting a precedent for other entities to say, it's okay to ignore Cesar Chavez. Maybe it's not that important. And that is not what we should be doing to the general population of this strong community that has been neglected for decades, that's barely coming to its own, that's being inclusive with every ethnicity in the city. It is not the message we should be giving. And our young people should have heroes to aspire to, and they should have symbols to look to. We need it for their self-esteem. If we're ever going to get to the gang culture, if we're ever going to get to what hampers our youth, this is a time to speak up. So I want to thank you for your support. Thank you for that message, and I look forward to speaking to them tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate everybody's time.
All right. With that, we will continue this matter for one day for further discussion tomorrow. Next item?
Item number fifty-five was called special for,
Madam Chair, question, point of order. What's the directive? Who, who reaches out to IBW, and how do we make sure that they have a representative here tomorrow? Just a question. I don't know if that goes to the authors of the motion, or if that goes to,
The CAO will communicate that request.
All right. All of the above?
All right. On item fifty-five, let me recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, this is item fifty-five.
Colleagues, this is item 55, a motion that we brought in that will call for a, the beginning of a process to, to create a horse trail master plan in the San Fernando Valley and in Hanson Dam specifically. Before I talk on the item, I know there's a lot of members of the public who've come here early this morning and have been patient for better than an hour now. I move for a 10-minute hearing on this item, and then I'll speak to the motion after the public comment.
All right. We do have a 10-minute. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, let me call forward. We have a number of cards. I noticed they are either all in support or for general comments. So let me call you to line up and speak. Sherry Blows and William Blows, Deborah Baumann, Mary Benson, please come up and land, line up behind the microphone.
My name is Sherry Blows. This is my husband, William Blows. We've been residents of the Silmar area for over 25 years. I'm past president of Corral 12, current president of the Silmar Chamber. We are very much in support of this project. It is vital that we identify the trails in our area, the Silmar area and this area, the San Fernando Valley is one of the last bastions of open space and equestrians. We're a very strong equestrian community, and the trails that we have up there need to be maintained, identified, and be able to be used. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Deborah Baumann. I'm the managing director of the Vaquero Heritage Foundation, an educational nonprofit dedicated to celebrating and preserving the magnificent 300-year-old Latino equestrian heritage of Los Angeles and San Fernando. Together with the War Horse Foundation, we co-produced Dia de Horse, Dia del Caballo at Hanson Dam. We thank council members Gruel and Padilla for their support of this annual event and invite you all to attend the next one on October 23rd. I've come here today to express our foundation's support for agenda item 55. We hope this trail mapping project will contribute to the very important task of identifying and restoring Los Angeles's historic trails. The reason it is important for the entire city council to support this project is because a truly successful and visionary trail project should encompass the entire city across all council districts. As members of the LA River Ad Hoc Committee are well aware, the Los Angeles River provides an outstanding opportunity to create a network of trails to link all neighborhoods through a common bond of healthy outdoor activity along a multi-user trail slash greenways system that promotes exercise and fitness. Thank you very much.
The next speakers will be James Gutman, James Wallace, and Margie Burson.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mary Benson, and I am the chair of the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council Trails Committee. I grew up discovering the joys of riding open space and rural ambience in the San Gabriel and Verdugo Mountains. I would like to thank Councilmember Padilla for his motion to create a plan that helps preserve this type of experience for future generations. In recent years, some of us have been doing extensive national research into trail issues. We learned that hundreds of municipal governments across the nation have partnered a patchwork of agencies for habitat preservation, land acquisition, and trails. In Los Angeles County, the cities of Pasadena, Flint Ridge, Altadena, Monrovia, and San Dimas have been receiving millions of state and federal dollars from partners for their trail-related projects. Please support this motion as a first step in bringing the city of Los Angeles onto par with other metropolitan centers like Boston, Phoenix, and Austin. Thank you.
Yes, I'm James Gutman. I'm, live in Shadow Hills, 10511 Mahoney Drive. And I'm here representing the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. We support this motion and would urge a similar effort be accomplished throughout the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers will be Ceele Borman, Heidi Paul, Kelly Land, and Charlotte Bedad.
Hi, my name is James Wallace. I've been with the city. I was a police officer the past 19 years. I've been living in the valley for the past 20 years, and I'm affiliated with Wallace Ranch Delivery Stables. We, we got a piece of heaven out there that should be untouched, and I hope everybody embraces it, come out and see what it really is all about. Thank you.
I'm Heidi Paul. I'm director of, what am I director of? Valley Vaqueros, a nonprofit agency. We set up riding programs for children through the city. Currently, we're working with recreation parks on a program. This is Ceele Borman, vice president of the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. And I have a letter from the interim president of the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. I would like to support the plan to study, develop, and maintain a network of equestrian trails in the San Fernando Valley. The neighborhoods of Lake Futeras, Shadow Hills, and La Tuna Canyon that make up the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council appreciate the attention of the city council, the leadership of Councilwoman Padilla, and the support of Councilmember Gruel on this issue. We look forward to working with the city in the development of a regional trails plan to preserve this valuable asset for the entire city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ceele Borman. I'm a vice president of Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council, and I live in Lake Futeras. And I'm happy to see us moving forward to preserve and embellish upon the horse trails of the northeast San Fernando Valley. I strongly recommend that all prior information be assembled beforehand and used to cut the costs associated with needless research so that our resources will be utilized in a responsible manner. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Land. I'm a resident of Silmar for 12 years now, and I'm presently president of ETI Corral 12. I want to thank Los Angeles City Council and Honorable Council President Padilla for listening to our entreaties for the mapping of the rim of the Valley Trail Corridor. In Silmar, we are blessed with miles of hiking and equestrian trails and also Stetson Ranch Equestrian Park. We are fortunate to have many volunteers from equestrian trails, Corral 12, and Silmar, who spend countless hours providing tractor work to maintain the main arena and dressage arenas, picking up trash and making trail repairs. Thanks to Honorable President Padilla, we received a grant which is enabling us to repair eroded trails. Two weeks ago, at Stetson Ranch, we put on a horse show at which we had 90 horses and over 100 participants. After the show, we received many letters and phone calls from trainers who brought children from as far as Bakerfield, Central California, who complimented the city of Los Angeles for providing such a beautiful facility. We received many inquiries asking about our local trail network as they plan to bring family and friends back to the beautiful Silmar trails for riding and other forms of recreation. In this age of stress and fast food, our children are fortunate to have these open spaces where fresh air and exercise promotes a healthy lifestyle while providing, providing opportunities for fun and family togetherness. Getting this trail access to the rim of the Valley Corridor would open up a new opportunity for hikers, equestrians, bird watchers, and mountain bikers to enjoy our lovely mountains and scenic communities. This would ensure future generations could enjoy these recreational opportunities in their own backyard around the San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
President, President Pro Temp, and members of the city council, it's a great pleasure to be here today. I have lived, my name is Charlotte Bedad, and I've lived in Silmar for 38 years. I'm past president of the Silmar Chamber and also the co-founder of the Silmar Graffiti Busters. The main issue in our community that we've had so much development that we have trails that don't go anywhere. When I moved in, there was a trail behind my home. Now I have homes there. I know we have to have development, but my concern is when a developer comes in, he's required to put in a trail, and then that trail doesn't go anywhere. It dead ends. We definitely need to support this, this article that Alex Padilla has put before us today to see that we can preserve some of our culture and ways of life that we have in our communities for, for the mountains. We voted right up against the mountains, and that there is many beautiful trails. We don't only need horse trails, but also we need bike trails and hiking trails. Please support this issue that's before you today.
All right. The following speakers, Terry Crosswhite, Patty Hug, and David Rinneker.
Thank you so much. My name is Terry Crosswhite, and I'm the office manager at the Silmar Chamber of Commerce. And I've lived in Silmar for seven years. I have four children, and two of them have been involved in Boy Scouts. And I wholly support this, this proposal because it would give outlets to our children that do not necessarily have them locally to go and hike and see nature as it really is. Thank you.
My name is Patty Hug. I'm a resident of Silmar for about 25 years and a resident of Los Angeles for another 15 years. I'd like to thank the city council and the Honorable President Padilla for allowing us to present our views on the rim of the Valley Corridor. This name was given by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy as a boundary encircling the edge of the San Fernando Valley, La Rosenta and Sevi Valley, the Santa Clara River from its headwaters by Palmdale to the Santa Clara Woodlands by the city of Santa Clarita. The rim of the Valley Corridor was designed by the legislature to facilitate the development of an interlocking system of public parks, trails, and wildlife habitat preserves within the mountain areas. The backbone of that system and the thread which will one day tie it together will be the multi-use, long-distance rim of the Valley Trail, including the Verdugos, San Rafael's, the Santa Susana Mountains, Elysian Park, Griffitha Park, and the Santa Monica Mountains. This network was the dream of Marge Feinberg over 20 years ago as she wrote a thesis on this subject. This brings us to the need to approve the mapping of the existing and potential trails in the city of Los Angeles for equestrians, mountain bikes, hiking, and nature walks. In 1977, the planning commission and working with Councilman Halpern-Sinn of the 12th District prepared a guide to the existing and potential equestrian trails. That guide, by the way, is why I bought a home in Silmar, but it's now way outdated. It was revised in 1987 and again in 1991. We would like to see an entire city map made for this purpose to allow horsekeeping districts and residential and agricultural zones to maintain, to remain for the residents of these communities. This would provide the ability to know where we could go to enjoy the ambiance of the great outdoors of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Good day. My name is David Rinneker. I've been a volunteer with the city of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks at Stetson Ranch Equestrian Park since 1995. And I diligently help out and make sure everything's taken care of. And real quick, this motion in front of you is intended to produce a guide to potential and existing trails to show the status of the trail system in the San Fernando Valley and beyond. The trails are designed to be a, a regional horse trail. This guide would contain information relative to the important improvements needed to complete the system as well as update and define the routes in use. Study areas for potential future trails for decision-makers of the city of Los Angeles to consider when making land use recommendations, and for the logical progress, progression of development of trail networks surrounding the valley. Please support item 55. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The time for the public hearing has run. We will, let the remainder of the cards be made a part of the public file, and thank you for coming down. Let me recognize Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, to my constituents, thank you. I want to thank you for coming down here this morning. I want to thank you for your eloquent testimony. I want to thank you for your commitment to not only horse trails but to a way of life out in the San Fernando Valley, because it's not just the northeast end of the valley. It really is part of the San Fernando Valley and the entire region's history and heritage. And I want to tell you that I have heard you, and I think you're going to find today a city council that has heard you as well. Colleagues, the motion that's on the agenda today asks for the beginning of a process that recognizes horse trails, the same way that we recognize other elements of planning when it comes to the city and when it comes to the region. You know, when there's contentious proposed developments, commercial, residential, industrial, or otherwise, it's because we have a master plan that guides the direction that the city is moving in, and we know whether something fits in the master plan or doesn't fit in the master plan, and it forces the question as to whether or not we should sometimes accommodate or make exceptions. On a regional basis, we have a transportation master plan. We have a system of freeways and rail and buses, and it forces the question of where are we headed when it comes to transportation? Well, we have something that's a very important part of the valley's history and of the city's history as it pertains to horse trails, equestrian trails. But unfortunately, we don't have the formal process, a master plan, that forces the question of where have we been when it comes to equestrian trails? Where are we going as it pertains to equestrian trails? And I thank groups like those who are here today for educating me that, you know, sometimes equestrian trails are very fluid, depending on weather changes from year to year, depending on the rain, depending on various things. A specific trail may change or be altered, and that's the beauty of it because it is part of nature. But there's also a backbone, a system that serves as the backbone that doesn't change from year to year. And when we ask questions about recreation and park projects, housing developments, this and that, that could affect horse trails, there's nothing that we can point to on paper that says, yes, this is where we need to protect, or this is where maybe if we find it okay, we can work around. And so that's what I'm asking for, for the city to engage in a process that begins a master plan for existing equestrian trails and can also highlight opportunities for potential future trails. I want to make a couple of quick amending motions. Number one, I know, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Reyes because this motion hasn't come through the Plum Committee. It came straight to the council, but I want to commit to him and formally amend my motion that the, the report as to how to proceed under a venture like this first go through Plum before coming back to the council for full consideration. So the directive to the department should be amended, and as the author of the motion, I can make that a friendly one, that it be, go through the Plum Committee first. Second, there is an amending motion that I've introduced that has been circulated. Colleagues, an effort of this magnitude can't be done without resources. And so I'm willing to put up the first $50,000 out of my GCP, some of which has come from the Dexter Park monies that we talked about just a few months ago, towards this effort. And part of the, the action on the council agenda asks the department to go seek resources to finish a study of this magnitude as well. I want to quickly thank a couple of colleagues for their support. Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Cardenas, who many people don't know, when he was an assemblyman and was bringing monies home to the northeast valley and to Hanson Dam, included horse trails as part of the scope of the work that would be done with some of that, that money. I also have a couple of field deputies here, Dan, Robert, Kaime. I want to thank them for their hard work and continuing to reach out to the community. Consuelo, I see you're here too. But colleagues, this, you're all, you've all have heard about the equestrian heritage of the valley. Many of you have been on horse rides, but all of you are very familiar with the constituency and the way of life out in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Through this motion, through this action, I want to take it to the next level in formalizing it, recognizing it, documenting it, help protect it for the future of the valley, the future of Los Angeles. And colleagues, I can't, I can't find a better way to pay tribute to the years and years of hard work and organizing and fighting at times by the constituents who are here addressing us this morning than by voting to approve this measure and asking the department to report back to Plum sooner rather than later. Let's move forward. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Council President Padilla. We have the pleasure of sharing a number of the constituents here today. I think they believe they live in both of our areas, which is a wonderful sign of the cooperation, I think, attention we pay to equestrian issues. Mr. Reyes was gracious enough, about a year and a half ago, we had a Plum meeting in my district where we talked about equestrian issues, and several ideas came forward that we have been moving on. And this concept from Mr. Padilla builds on that and I think is a wonderful asset for the city of Los Angeles. The gentleman who spoke and said that this is a slice of heaven, a piece of heaven, I wholeheartedly agree with you, and I know many of my colleagues would agree with you as well. This is a wonderful heritage of our city and a place that we need to continue to protect. And so we have, in cooperation and working with Councilmember Smith recently in his election, we have been working on ways in which we can build upon the existing systems. In my district, we obviously, and many of you were present, adopted the scenic preservation corridor plan, which included language specifically on the descriptions on the public and non-public trails. Also, colleagues, if anything occurs in my district development, a subdivision, it must include trails and a way in which they connect to the larger piece. And I think as Mr. Padilla has proposed, this is going to allow us to extend that effort. Also, with the coming of the rim of the Valley Trail, the city's trail network has grown beyond the scale. I think that can be handled within a single district. We often talk about one city. We talk about our, our valley, including all. We often talk about one city, we talk about our valley, including all of the equestrian areas. And I think that the people you've seen testify today, I cannot say it enough, and Mr. Padilla mentioned it as well, these people have worked long and hard, and they've done the work. We all have constituents who sometimes come forward and demand and demand and demand, but aren't willing to really do the hard work. This group of individuals have not only talked the talk, but they have walked the walk. They have been out there talking about equestrian rights, equestrian areas, and have been willing to do the hard work. So I'm pleased to stand here today and support this motion, and Mr. Padilla was gracious enough to let me sign on as well with this motion. And I, I know, Mr. Padilla, we mentioned a kind of a friendly amendment that would ask that the Equestrian Task Force that was created at the Plum Committee be directed to work with Rec and Parks and the Department of City Planning and your district, Council District Four, Seven, and Twelve, that have a majority, although I think in Eleven, we also have equestrian on this side of the Hill as well, to incorporate those existing trail maps into a comprehensive map of recreational areas. This wouldn't hold up, I know your 45-day interest in getting back, but to look at, again, the connection, as Deb Baumann was saying, the connection with our river and how all of these recreational areas should have some ability to connect where appropriate. And so we're looking at the big picture here, our community's looking at the big picture, and I'd like to just add that as a friendly amendment. And it's my hope that we can have another ride. Janice Hahn joined me last year, and I know Alex has been at riding, and I think Tony has as well, and Greg, all of you to enjoy the beautiful, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, and Martin on King Boulevard rode a horse, so we have an equestrian amongst us as well. That's the south side of the trail, that's right. But it is a wonderful experience to enjoy the real slice of heaven in the city of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley. So I wholeheartedly support today and ask for that friendly amendment, and to thank all of you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Councilmember Reyes.
First, I want to thank my colleagues for this great step. I know the plans that, with General Mr. Burnson, Councilmember Burnson, he actually has a literature, he has a brochure, he shows maps, he worked on it for years. But then again, we always have tension between development and open space, so I won't go there. But the bottom line is, these equestrian trails, in my mind, are like a, the analogy would be, you know, the body has all these nerves, they interconnect to make the body move. Well, we have these tributaries throughout the Southern California area, and we need to start focusing on watershed management. What greater way than to use these trails as a network of how we start looking at the flow of water in terms of watershed management? The reason why I say that, because Royal Seco used to have trails, Debs Park went up to the Royal, and when you look at the foothills, and we start looking at the whole notion of water and how we're developing and maintaining our ecology, the role of horse trails is one in which we can actually start seeing the system evolve. When we look at the foothills as they start emerging around Elysian Park and Debs Park, Montecito Heights, up to Mount Washington, and all the way into Glendale, as you go through the Glendale Narrows into the valley, you actually have these tremendous potential for trails that can link the city in the northeast area all the way up to the valley. Now, this is not wishful thinking. This is very real issues when it comes to watershed management. We talk about how we rejuvenate our aquifers, how we start looking at our water table, because folks, Colorado, other parts of the state in the southwest are saying, enough, you're not taking our water, this start cutting back. We, as a city, have started talking about our sense of independence and our water base. These are very, very real issues, and these equestrian trails can serve as that nervous system that allows water to penetrate through permeable surfaces, that creates safe trails for horses, at the same time amplify the need for open space as we connect these networks of open space along our foothills and our mountains that connect to the valley. Now, Santa Monica Conservancy, the folks up in Montecito Heights, the Homer Associations, Mount Washington, you know, the work of Councilman Hernandez and Richard Polanco, and then Speaker Villarreal, they've all been putting these pieces together. But it's about time through the efforts of Councilman Padilla, Councilmember Grul, and Councilmember Smith, how we start stimulating that network through this watershed management, using equestrian trails as that nervous system, if you will, to make this body healthy. So I congratulate you, I look forward to this great work. It seems daunting, but it's something we need to do for future generations. Great work.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just wanted to briefly say thank you very much, Alex, for putting this forward. This is actually a dream come true for people who actually engage in this lifestyle on a day-to-day basis. As Wendy Grul mentioned, once in a while, some of us who don't own our own horses might get out there and enjoy the day and enjoy that lifestyle, but this is really about providing an opportunity that is something that is good for the environment, it's good for people's health, it's good for people who want to enjoy that lifestyle. And just because you live in Los Angeles, just because you live in the San Fernando Valley, doesn't mean that you should have to give up that lifestyle. So I think this is, this is one step closer to a dream come true. I'm just glad to have been reminded by you, Alex, when I was in the state legislature, when there was some money to hand down to the San Fernando Valley. We did send some money this way for some horse trails, and hopefully this will add to the dimension and the scope that you're looking for to try to make this a real, a reality for the entire San Fernando Valley. So good luck.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and we've got two great leaders, at least two, probably more, on equestrian issues here, and I want to praise Mr. Padilla, the work that Ms. Grul did as well, and really linking into something which is fundamentally part of our history. I grew up riding horses here too, in Los Angeles and in the West, something that I think is so critical for us understanding our past, for our young people that are here today or guests. You know, this is not something new, it's not something that's just arrived here. I was looking through a little bit of the history, and when you look, Tom LaBonde's not here today, so I'll have to try my best to do a Tom LaBonde imitation with a little bit of LA history, but the pobladores that came here, the 44 individuals from Alta Calif, or from Baja California, who came up, you know, there were criollo, and there were mulatto, and there were negro, and there were blanco, and there were mestizo and indio, the same faces we have in the audience today have been here from the very beginning, the same diversity that we had. And with them came 931 horses and mules that were over at San Gabriel, the Mission San Gabriel. And when those 40 pobladores made the last trek of eight miles along what's now Mission Road to found the city here in Los Angeles, they went partially because they were each promised two horses, two mares, and one mule as well. It was part of the enticement of what took them and what brought them here. In fact, LA was so passionate about its horses that there's a great story from 1795, padre Salazar, who was over at the Mission in San Gabriel, said that somebody came from Los Angeles and he owned over 1,000 horses in 1795, but he couldn't find a good shirt in Los Angeles, so he had to walk all the eight miles back to the Mission just to try to find a shirt, but we had plenty of horses. And you know, when we look at the trails too that are here, this is part of, there's something happening kind of here in the little bit of the northeast, and I know Mr. Reyes and Mr. Villarreal have worked on this, but the idea of a heritage trail too, that will link to some of the historical spots, not just of Spanish history, but of Chinese-American history, of Black American history here in Los Angeles, something that people could come and cultural tourism, learn about the history of Los Angeles. Young people could come downtown and through Chinatown up into where the Southwest Museum is, the Autry Museum, and imagine if we had a kind of horse trail that linked with that as well. I think it's a real goal, now that we have something starting out in the valley, to link that all the way to where this all started, right here, literally about 100 feet from where we sit today, where there are already Indians there. And these trails too link to our roads today. I mean, the trails that exist, the freeways, used to be roads, before they were roads, they were Indian trails, and before that, they were part of the natural waterway, which is where these trails, again, are going to take that same kind of ecological history and bring that alive. So thank you, Mr. Padilla, for your leadership on this, thank you to all of you, and this is one step of many forward. Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Ludlow passes. Mr. Zine.
Just briefly, I want to congratulate Alex, Wendy, Greg, I know when you were working for Hal, concerned about the environment and the horses. I was born in Hollywood area, and I wasn't fortunate to have a horse, but I had a little motorcycle, and I grew up into the motorcycle stage, where now I ride a big motorcycle. Whether you're on a horse or a Harley-Davidson, you're doing the Western Dream, galloping through the community. And while we have the trails up in Silmar, we have Amundson Ranch, and all of my colleagues and the mayor and the city attorney and everyone, we're all on the same page, we've turned Amundson Ranch into a park under the Conservancy. So the horses up in Silmar are welcome to come on and gallop over in the Amundson Ranch, and it shows that your representatives here on Council are not ignoring the San Fernando Valley, and our colleagues from other parts of the city are supporting what we're doing for the people of the San Fernando Valley to save that environment and to give you what John Wayne always had, that good horse ride through the wilderness. Thank you for being here.
And to close, Councilmember Padilla.
The question, Dennis, is what's the horsepower of your Harley? When Mr. Zine wears that vest that says "Born to Ride," we're gonna have to get him up on a horse one of these days. Now, colleagues, I very much appreciate your support and your very kind words, and what did I tell you? I think we're gonna find a friendly City Council today and a council that has finally heard you and is willing to take a great, great step. I ask for your support on these items here today, colleagues. And just for clarification, of course, we're gonna work the Equestrian Task Force that's been established in the Plum Committee, but just to be realistic and to get the process going, it's always a matter of resources. I've worked with the Department of Recreation and Parks to identify some initial resources for the study just within the Hanson Dam area, because we know we have a tremendous network just within that region. Today, we're taking the step of trying to go valley-wide, valley-wide, and as I said, I've offered up the first $50,000 out of our GCP. I'd asked the Department to try to identify additional resources, colleagues. If you have anything buried under a hat somewhere, please, this is a wonderful, wonderful use. But as we're looking, or as we're seeing that more and more people want to be involved with this, people on the west side, people around Griffith Park, people in different parts of the city, that's only gonna expand the scope of what we're trying to do there. And I know we want to be there eventually, have a citywide plan and a citywide process, but that's gonna require even more money. So today, we take the step of trying to tackle the valley first, and then we'll get to the city. The sooner we can identify and commit more resources, the sooner we can get to that citywide proposal. So colleagues, for those of you who are interested in being involved, I ask you to come and be involved, and please bring some resources with you. One final clarification, I mentioned earlier at the request of Mr. Reyes that this matter, when the report does come back, that it come to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee in the motion as is written, it also calls for it to come through the Arts Parks Committee as well, recognizing that there's a, the huge connection already between horse trails and our recreation and park facilities throughout the San Fernando Valley. So with that clarification, colleagues, I ask for your support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. I believe we had a couple of friendly amendments, they will be incorporated. Let us open the roll on the motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved, we will send it forth with to the mayor. Thank you. At this time, for a very special presentation, let me, and many guests in the audience, let me recognize Councilmember Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. If I can have the El Camino Real High School girls soccer team join me? Come on up, ladies. El Camino Real High School, conquistadors, 2003, 2004, varsity girls soccer, city champions. And joining us is the coach, Shana Sars. Shana, way in the back, come on up, please. This is what Alex Padilla refers to as a trifecta, the big three, and the valley shines once again. El Camino High School, girls soccer champions. Victorious in the city championship game of 2003, 2004, girls soccer playoffs at East LA College on March 6th. Achieved the championship with an impressive display of power by outscoring their opponents in the playoffs 29 to 2, including a 6-1 victory in the championship game. El Camino Real began the playoffs as the top-ranked team, and Janice Hahn's always saying girl power, Janice, here is girl power. And senior, Candace McLaughlin, Candace? Come on up. They've got special recognition for you, achieved her fourth hat trick in five playoff games. So you did some hat trick there, right? You made some magic happen. Champions of the West Valley League with a 9-1 record, completed their girls soccer city championship season with a record 22 wins, four losses, and one tie. They have claimed the city girls soccer championship for the fourth consecutive year. And congratulations from the Los Angeles City Council, we have a presentation, and there's one for each of you that we're gonna be presenting upstairs. I understand you're going to lunch in the Bradley Tower, and I know that you've been here for a while, so every minute you spend here in Council is one minute you don't have to spend in the classroom. So there's a benefit to being here in City Council, watching your government here at work. And this is gonna be televised tonight on Channel 35, so you'll be able to see yourselves. So I want to give this to you and turn the microphone over to you, since you're the one in charge of this winning team. Shana.
I just wanted to say thank you for honoring us. It's a pleasure to be here, and these girls have worked hard all year long to get to the city championship and achieve their goal of winning the fourth straight. It takes, it's a team effort, and without the team and their hard work, it wouldn't occur. So thank you very much for honoring us.
Thank you. And let's gather round for a photo. Okay, congratulations and thank you all. And I know they're gonna escort you up to the Bradley Tower, where you're gonna enjoy some refreshments, lunch. Is the second phase, we have the Canoga Park High School Hunters, boys soccer champions. Canoga Park Soccer, come on up. Canoga Park. And Jack, Gwyn, Jack, our coach, and Dave Perez, assistant coach, you're both here? Jake, I'm sorry, Jake. Jake and Dave. All right. Why don't you guys come on in here? Canoga Park High School, the Hunters, boys soccer champion. City championship game, boys soccer playoffs at East LA College also on March 6th. Won its first-ever boys soccer city championship in a thrilling 1-0 victory. The lone goal was scored by freshman Salvador Hernandez. Salvador, come on up here. 1-0 victory, and Salvador scored that. Started the playoffs as the number-one ranked team, champions of the Sunset Six League with an undefeated 7-02 record. Achieved the championship with an impressive turnaround from a last-place finish and only one win the previous year. You came from way behind to taking it all. Completed the championship season with a record 19 wins, one loss, and two ties. And we have our coaches here to say a few words from the Canoga Park High School Hunters, boys soccer champions. Coaches.
First of all, thank you guys very much for having us. We really appreciate the honor of being here in City Hall and Councilman Zine. It's been an absolutely wonderful season for us, very much a dream season. It's been a great experience for myself and even greater experience for my boys here, and I'm really happy for them mostly.
Thank you. Did you want to speak? Come on up here. You guys, go down.
I just want to thank everybody for this, this is beautiful. We have a great family over here, and I got one thing to say, who do we play for?
Canoga!
That's right. Thanks.
And they're also going to receive individual certificates of recognition, we'll do the presentation, and we've got one more, Madam President, we're gonna take some photos. Here we are. Pardon me? I don't know if they're gonna have the same room or a separate room, we want to, you know, keep peace and tranquility here at City Hall. All righty, thank you, and you will be escorted up to the Bradley Tower also. Congratulations, Canoga Park. Thank you. This is the next one. And the basketball champions, here we come with the third of the trifecta, the basketball championship from the San Fernando Valley. We have the one and only, and these look like, I mean, look at these guys, this is high school. It's unbelievable, high school. Taft High School, boys basketball champions. I mean, this is amazing. Talk about basketball players, I'm six foot one, look at this. Well, what?
Dennis.
But wait a second, I am in my heels.
Dennis, where's my measuring tape?
All right, here we go. A championship game, 2003, 2004, boys basketball playoff. A championship game, 2003-2004, boys basketball playoffs at the Los Angeles Sports Arena on March 6th. Taft High School took the final lead of the game with 43 seconds to play in a seesaw battle, led by UCLA-bound Jordan Farmers. 29 points, the team, what? Farmar, where is Jordan? Come on up here, Jordan. Jordan Farmar. They misspelled it, Jordan. 29 points secured a 64 to 60 victory. It was a playoff run that included victories over both the first and second-ranked teams. Taft High School won its first basketball title since winning the city 3A trophy in 1980. Co-champions of the West Valley League with a 9-1 record, completed their boys basketball city championship season with a record 28 wins and three losses. The first San Fernando Valley high school to win the Los Angeles City section major division boys basketball championship in 40 years. Congratulations. Taft High School. Derek Taylor and Mark Drucker. Derek, come on up. You're not as tall as these guys, man. Here you go.
That's the standing joke, I have a big head with the boys. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to honor us. It was a great year, it was a great ride. The boys...
Quiet.
The boys, the boys bought into what we were teaching. And I can't tell you how type of magical ride it was, but they worked hard, they earned it. This 40-year monkey off the San Fernando Valley's back, it shows that we can play basketball over the hill. And once again, thanks for having us here.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you for being here, and congratulations. Taft High School, boys basketball champions. And that's three from the San Fernando Valley. Photo time?
While they're getting their photo up there, I just wanna say to the member who's going to UCLA, who is it again?
Who's going to UCLA, Jordan?
What's your name again?
Jordan Farmar.
Jordan, I know as your colleges continue, your legends will continue to grow at UCLA more and more, so I look forward to a great future with the Bruins.
Well, he's a UCLA graduate, that's why he's saying that.
Mr. Cardenas.
No kidding?
We got more coming up.
I have a question for the little guy in the black shirt in the front.
This guy right here?
Yeah, Roca wear. Roca wear, yeah, there you go.
How tall are you?
Wait a minute, I just, one question, man. Who's bigger, you or Shaq? How tall are you? How tall are you? How tall are you?
6'10". How much you weigh? 330. 6'10". That is awesome. That is awesome.
Mr. Zine.
How old are you? 17 years old.
Mr. Padilla.
Mr. Zine.
Yes.
Mr. Cardenas wants to know what you guys are doing on Tuesday nights.
Oh, you wanna challenge, huh?
And if you have strong fingers.
Mr. Cardenas is a little bit in for a pickup game here.
I'm over the hill.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
And you're all gonna be on television, so there you go.
Members, item 58 had been called special by Mr. Smith, and a card had been submitted. The card is withdrawn. Mr. Smith has no objections, so that matter is able to be voted on. Let's open the roll on item 58. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Cardenas?
Would you like to move item 1 forthwith?
All right, item 1 will be moved forthwith. Also, I would like to move item 14 forthwith. That brings us now to the public comment period. Let me call forward for public comment the following speakers. Carlos Ceballos, Bergardian Gonzalez, I guess that's Benjamin Gonzalez. Winita Tate, please come forward. Please address us.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Carlos Ceballos. I'm a member of the community. I'm here to discuss about the Lancer site. You respectfully have the privilege to hear what Mr. Horowitz has to say, you've heard what the gardeners have to say, and I'm just inviting you to a town hall meeting, Main and Slauson, Arantos Columbus Football Club. That's gonna be April 1st, it's gonna be in the evening, and I would just like you to come out and see what the community has to say and what the community wants in the community. Like I said, you've had the privilege to hear what Mr. Horowitz has to say and what the gardeners have to say. And as a member of the community, I would like to be able to speak for you guys and for the community as well. And once again, that's April 1st, town hall meeting on Arantos Columbus Football Stadium, Main and Slauson. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Benjamin Gonzalez and represent a family from Los Angeles Soccer League. We know, we are here to invite a meeting down on Arantos Columbus Football Club on April 1st. We know all children need a safety place to play. We support the gardens, but it's very important for us to see you at this time at the meeting on Arantos Columbus Club to see what the community are asking for. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mark Williams. I'm here representing the North Central American Youth Soccer League. There is no community garden as such on the Lancer site. The garden at the Lancer site is an exclusive place where some people have the right to charge people $1,000 to cultivate a plot, and where farmers of means who can afford to pay the $1,000 are allowed to purchase that right. Councilman Smith, we wanna work with the council and with the office to make sure that the concept of interim use for a piece of property is clear. There can be no right to use public property without the responsibility to keep your word. Mr. Horowitz deserves to get his property back. It was taken through eminent domain. The public use for which the property was taken has not come to pass. Give Mr. Horowitz his property back. In our community, we have had families whose houses have been taken to build schools. We've borne the brunt of eminent domain before. We've been asked to make the sacrifice, but a sacrifice for a public purpose. If the public purpose doesn't go forward, we need for the land to go back to the owner and then in good faith, let us work with the owner of the property for the future of the site. We support community gardens, but we also need affordable housing. We need jobs, and our kids need a safer place than the streets to play. Mr. Horowitz needs to understand, we are not gonna support warehouses and cold storage on that facility. The same coalition that fought warehouses in Taylor Yard, that fought warehouses downtown in the cornfields is a formidable coalition, and we're gonna make sure that the community's interests are served there on the Lancer site. But the time is up for the gardeners to be perceived as the community. They are not. The gardeners are insensitive to the needs of the local community. They've come marching saying, no soccer, no, our children need a safe place to play. They've had their time. If you're interested, please come join us at our town hall meeting on April 1st at Slauson and Main at Arantos Columbus Football Club site and hear what the community has to say. It's not as simple as what's being portrayed in the media, some big, bad, private landowner, capitalist who's trying to take advantage of poor, humble gardeners. That's not what's going on. So please, come out and join us, hear what the community has to say. Together, we can work it all out. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Winita Tate, and the final speaker will be Warren Williams.
Good morning, council people. And to my councilwoman, Jan Perry, if all of you have worked with us to listen to the community and will listen to the gardeners and understand, history is really important. Two years, 10 years ago, I negotiated for the gardeners to be at the Lancer site. I negotiated with the Port of LA. After negotiating that, they've been there for 10 years. But what we have found, and this has been an organizing piece, we have listened to all the rumble that is not exactly representing people in the garden. We have tried to get this information out in the paper, but it hasn't been sexy. We have, that is a business enterprise over there. We have a client that paid $800 for a plot. He didn't keep the plot the way the gardeners say it should be kept, so they took the plot away from him, and he has no recourse. Community gardens don't charge money for people to be there. It's in an enterprise zone, it's in a redevelopment zone, it's in an enterprise community. Since the '92 riots, we have lost 30% of our jobs. We need a clean, safe, we have .38 acres of park space in our community. We need to, we've talked to a designer, an architect, who has talked about looking at the 13-acre parcel of land, and all of you that have 13-acre parcels, I'm sure you're not looking for it to go for free because AB 1290 says you must make money within your community. But we have an architect that's looked at commercial, mixed-use, housing, and putting the community garden on the roof. We're for community gardens. We started community gardens in South Central, but we can't have people from Pacific Palisades, we can't have people from all over using our gardens, and people from MTA collecting the money for the garden. There's no tax increment money coming back to our community from that garden, and there's thousands of dollars being made on that site. And when this morning, and you know, we came down here this morning, we got some more people gonna come. But when we seen the paper this morning, the op-ed piece, we knew that we had to come and make a statement. And council people, you may as well get ready because concerned citizens fought to save this for the community. That was the Lancer site, and we didn't let nobody else do anything that was gonna harm the community, and we're not gonna let people continue to come in our community and rape our poor community, poor people of their rights. So I thank you very much. It's not over till it's over, and there's no good deed goes unpunished. When I negotiated for them people to be there, it was for a community garden. Councilman Reyes, I'm with you. Councilman Smith, I'm with you. Councilman Parks, you have no idea what your motion meant today, that item 15. Councilwoman Perry, I refuse to talk to you today because I don't want people to think anything instead of, but understand this, I've been on you too. Because you're trying to do it the nice way, and you know what? It ain't no good deed goes unpunished. It ain't no right way when people are raping your community. Thank you very much, people.
That concludes the public comment period. Ms. Perry, did you wanna?
I just wanted to thank the speakers today and to let them know that I will be attending the community meeting at Slauson and Main on, I believe it's April 1st, and I didn't catch the time, though.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williams.
Eight o'clock? Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Williams had turned in a card. Mr. Williams, you're the final speaker.
Thank you. To the city council, we're here to represent two important issues. The first one is still the naming of Crenshaw Boulevard. In relationship to Crenshaw Boulevard, we're asking on April 18th where they plan the worldwide Jewish reparations, that there will be a LA Blacks Holocaust Remembrance and Reparations Day on April 18th. And we're asking if that will take place at Lemur Park. And we're asking that the fees should be waived for the use of the park, and the island that's at the fork of Crenshaw and Lemur would be used for that purpose as well. So asking that, I'm asking that Martin Ludlow will make a motion for us to get use of that, even though I understand it's in Parks District, so we're asking that you both will agree to that. But it's very important that we recognize it was a Black Holocaust. This city council has made some actions related to reparations, and it's all one thing. So how that relates to Crenshaw Boulevard is that we're asking that from Crenshaw to Florence to Crenshaw to Wilshire can have a sign at either end and name that either Malcolm X Lane or name it Reparations Freedom Lane. Reparations doesn't only talk about paying money. Reparations more correctly defines repair. And we know that America is still racist, and that more Black people locked up in jail, more Black families are destroyed by Department of Children's Family Services, there's more high number of Blacks unemployed and homeless, and the state of the race still needs much repair. And we repair it by acknowledging that, by honoring April 18th at LA Blacks Holocaust Remembrance and Reparations Day, and taking a major boulevard used by that community and, you know, labeling it with a sign on either end so it doesn't cost a lot of money to do it, Reparations Freedom Lane or the Malcolm X Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. That does now conclude our public hearing comment. What is remaining on the desk, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting on referral.
They are posted and referred?
There's excuse on the desk. Councilman President Padilla requests to be excused Friday, April 16th for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Padilla is excused.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, are there any announcements, members? Any announcements? Any adjourning tributes? Mr. Weiss and Mr. Ludlow for an announcement or adjourning? Okay. Would everyone please rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Lawrence Allen Creary. Lawrence Allen Creary was born to Lou Jean and Ludlow B. Creary, M.D., on Sunday, February 2nd, 1969, at St. Francis Hospital in Lindwood, California. He passed, this passed February 25th. Lawrence was an amazing human being. He was a very kind, loving, happy person, always giving of himself as much as possible whenever possible. Lawrence loved learning and bathed himself endlessly in the pursuit of knowledge and understanding of art, great literature, music, and poetry. Lawrence graduated from Beverly Hills High School and spent the next decade attending art school and college, working diligently at perfecting his passion and skill for art, literature, music, and poetry. Lawrence is survived by his mother, Lou Jean Allen Creary, father Ludlow B. Creary, sisters Lisa Creary-Vasquez and LeAnn Creary-Jones. Brothers Ludlow Barrington Creary II and Adam Barrington Creary, great-grandmother Helen Allen, Uncle William Allen Jr., sister-in-law Jeanette Creary, brother-in-law Stephen Victor Vasquez, who's the president of the Mid-City Neighborhood Council, and Charles Jones. Stepmother Ruth V. Creary, stepsisters Bridget Harper and Trudy Harper Martinez. Niece Gabriella Lisa Vasquez, nephews Stephen Victor Vasquez Jr., who we honored here as a promising young scholar, Anthony Patrick Vasquez, James Petty, and Theodore Martinez, along with a host of other relatives and dear friends, and a quote from Lawrence Allen Creary. "A man without imagination does not see the possibility and therefore the beauty of an expression that is not his own." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we were going to be joined today by the daughter of a significant member of the community I represent who passed away a short time ago. I'd like to tell you about him, and we may be joined soon by his daughter, Lee Werble. The man who passed away was Roy Werble, and he was very involved in the Century City community for several generations. For more than 40 years, he was the publisher of a list of publications, the Century City News, Century City Guide, the West Los Angeles Guide, the Central City Guide, and Good Taste Magazine. He was born in 1929, and he passed away in the morning of March 8th, 2004, at his home in Santa Monica. He was active over the years with several organizations in Century City, including the Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary Club. And I've heard from so many people in both of those organizations over the past few weeks about Roy and about his contributions to the community. He is survived by his companion, Babs, his daughter, Lee, his sons, Roy Dennison, Roger, and Pete, his grandson, Roy, and his brother and sister-in-law, Roger and Sharon. He will be missed by several people in the Century City community.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Madam Clerk, call the roll. We are adjourned. Thank you.